I call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the city of Stewart, Nebraska governing body. The city of Stewart advised by the Nebraska Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this reading room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. President shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Stewart reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Bash, here. Camper.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Singleton. Schmidt.
Here.
Hans.
Here. Alright, the first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of May 3rd, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Laying in favor, walking back, Camper Fritz, pipe, Schmidt, Hans, motion here.
Item number two is consideration of consent agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Laying in favor, walking back, Camper Fritz, pipe, Schmidt, Hans, motion here.
Alright, item number three, public hearing, 7:00 PM, Department of Economic Development, Community Development Block Grant application, pre-development of a downtown revitalization program. Ryan, welcome, Ryan Harkins, with Sen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Ryan Harkins, I'm with the Southeast Nebraska Development District. This is the time and place for advertisement for the public hearing for the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Application for the city of Stewart, is in the downtown revitalization category. DTR, for short, it is a program that is somewhat different than other block grant applications you've been a part of in the past. The housing ones, for example, which are more based on low and moderate income percentages, are the traditional way most communities think of block grant applications. This one is different in that it is based on the other national objective, which is slum and blight conditions. You have an approved blight study that includes the downtown area. So because of that, you're eligible under this category to apply. It is a grant of, CBDG grant of $30,000 with a $7,500 match that is required. The unique other aspect of DTR is that there are two phases. This is an application for phase one, which is what we call the pre-development or planning phase, and would be essentially creating a downtown master vision or a master plan for downtown Stewart. And the area that we're generally looking at is an area that's roughly five blocks by roughly four blocks, sort of core of the downtown, so actually four blocks by five, yeah, six. So from South Street roughly up to parts of Roberts, and then from Eighth over to Third Street by and large. So again, the core of the downtown and some couple of surrounding blocks that encompass other downtown type of businesses. I mentioned two phases, and this was the application for phase one. Communities that are approved and awarded money for phase one become eligible at the end of that process for phase two, which is money for a project, essentially implementation, and that can be a grant of up to $350,000. But again, this is phase one, we have to get to that part first. The being awarded money in phase one can make you eligible to apply for that category as well. So this is a two-step process potentially. If you're awarded, it would make you eligible for those funds. But also, it's a category where you get bonus points for having a community redevelopment authority. You also get bonus points in the application for being a certified economic dealer. So again, the final product out of this grant, if you're awarded funding, is a downtown vision or a downtown master plan. So that's our stop, and if you have any questions, you may ask.
Do you have any questions yet, Sid?
The $30,000 that we're talking about now, would that go, where does that go? Does that go to some firm or consulting firm or somebody or to you guys to?
No, it would go to a consulting firm to create the downtown master plan. That's a selection process that we will still have to go through still. So that's not done yet. That's something we will assist the city with if you desire as little or as much as you want us to help with as part of the process.
So then, the, if we go through that step, then the next one is $350,000?
Correct.
Grant? And that's for anything that might happen in that four by five block area?
Right, it can be used for anything in terms of project related, so it would be essentially to help implement a project. So I'll give you some concrete examples. If you want to do side improvements, if you want to do upper floor rehab for, say, redevelopment to deal with blight health safety issues, those are two concrete examples. Dealing with infrastructure in the downtown, like ADA rents, for example, riding, things like that. Those are all examples of what that $350,000 could be used for.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have Chris and Helen.
I got a couple of questions here, so the, we get to phase two, we get the $350,000 grant, who administers that? Is it administered by the city?
You would be the awardee, we would do the grant administration for phase one as well as phase two, if you're awarded funding.
Okay. Second question, the $7,500, yeah, $7,500 match, I know Jonathan's in here. Jonathan, what's the study we're doing with Carney?
Yeah, we were doing a marketing plan with University of Nebraska, Carney, they have senior marketing class that did that.
No relation to being part of this match?
Correct, we just had a downtown group that's been engaged, and this is one piece of the puzzle.
Okay. This is to be more of an infrastructure, bricks and mortar type of projects, correct?
Generally, yes. You can use the downtown vision plan to take the marketing piece that you're already doing now and incorporate that for something a little bit broader, but oftentimes it is that against me.
Thank you. Is that four from yours?
Yep.
Helen?
When you mentioned you, potentially with $350,000 for a project, can that project be multifaceted? Can it be, you know, different parts of the infrastructure, on different parts of different blocks? Can we just break it all up and just apply it in more of a piecemeal manner? Or does it have to just go for facade or just go for renovations for ADA?
Okay, no, you could break it up. For example, if you have five or six blocks where you want to do work on, you could use that for that type of project. You would just want to identify when we get to that phase, where we're applying for that money, and let the $350,000 goes toward any of those blocks. You don't have to pick one, you can spread it out over multiple areas. It all comes down to how you, really what your priorities from that first phase are, and then how you want to use that money if you're awarded phase two funding.
And then presumably, if we're successful and we give the $350,000, we do great work, can we go back again and do it again and continue working upon, building upon what we started with another grant?
You could potentially, you could look at some other funding sources as well. What the state may do in the future is what they've done in some other communities, and have you just kind of do a quick update of your master plan and make sure you are aware of what the requirements are. Let's face it, over a year or two, some things can change. So there might be that involved, but it could potentially open up further funding down there.
Yes, Sid?
Would you anticipate with this initial $30,000 that we would incur any other expenses above and beyond that?
Only if you're choosing to.
Okay, but, okay, so we would have to approve something like that?
Okay, and that comes back, for example, obviously the example of a process for a consulting. You know, if we advertise those best qualifications, they're going to know typically what the funding amount is. So they know upfront, this is what's there on the table. If the community is the awardee, chooses to do a contract above that amount, obviously that extra is on the bill.
Thank you. Yes, Chris?
Okay, I just need, when I read this in council packet, I was a little confused, and your explanation's been good, we've had good, some good discussion on, but I'm still a little bit confused when I read the document that was in the packet, where it's referring a lot to language assistance.
And that's actually item, that's item A, which should be the first thing the council will be asked to consider, which deals with the Limited English Proficiency and Language Assistance Plan, is that what you're referring to?
That is what I am.
Okay.
So this is one piece of it.
Essentially.
Cause I had the same question too when I read it.
Sure, thank you. Being an attorney of the American, and some of you have been in business and other things, you all know there are just hoops at times to jump through to get to the end product. The LEP, or the Limited English Proficiency and Language Plan, are one, two of the essentially exhibits that DEE now requires for all grant applications. And essentially, it deals with how do you address the concerns of people who don't speak English very well in your community, and how do you provide services for them if and when they request them, when they need them? And so, communities, for example, that currently have grant awards from DEE via Housing and Urban Development in Washington are required, being required to go back and adopt those plans now before grants close out or before monitoring reports are done. For new applications, this is now the requirement. And so this is essentially one of those hoops that we just have to jump through in order to apply for the funding.
And so does it change any way or receiving this funding by how this plan's put together?
No, it doesn't change how you receive funding, other than the fact that to apply for it, this is just one of those exhibits we have to have in the application.
So there's no like additional obligation on the city or commitment?
No, you're just saying, we're gonna do, this is what we have available now, and if we need to go, we'll do what we can when we can with the resources that we know are available.
We do have a Spanish-speaking person on staff, so we use that person if necessary, as long as they're available.
Sid?
You kind of asked my question, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Ryan?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, okay.
Thank you.
So the first thing I believe we need to consider would be item A and oh, okay, yeah. Okay, so before we get to items A and B, it is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? So let me know, and seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The public comment portion of the public hearing, thank you for catching that. And then we will move on then to item A, and this was, was mentioned earlier. Consideration for approval of the Limited English Proficiency and Language Assistance Plan for the 2016 CBDG DTR program and authorization of the mayor to sign said plan. We have approval. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Laying in favor, walking back, Camper Fritz, pipe, Schmidt, Hans, motion here.
And then item B, this is consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of all contracts, documents, or other memoranda between the city of Stewart and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development to accept the grant, and I would ask for someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been introduced, and it designated as resolution number 2016-11. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Laying in favor, walking back, Camper Fritz, pipe, Schmidt, Hans, motion here.
Alright, thank you. Before we move to number four, I did want to introduce, we have a different face tonight. As our city attorney, I meant to do it earlier, I forgot. We have Ryan McIntosh from Mattson Ricketts Firm, right? And you're sitting in for Kelly this evening, so in case you were wondering what was going on, so we appreciate you joining us.
Thanks for having me.
So with that awkwardness out of the way, we'll move on to number four, which is the public hearing against 7:00 PM for a tax increment financing application for the Bradford Center, I believe, Andrew Willis, welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Andrew Willis, Klein Williams Law Firm. The project before us tonight is the Bradford, Bradford Center, 510 Bradford. And this is a building that exists currently, and this is really sort of upgrades and enhancements to the project, so. The application that was presented came with some cost of, cost of about $134,000 they were incurring in this. As we go through and look at the cost benefit analysis, we're paring this down as far as what TIF actually could support and what we think is realistic there. But that, but it came with the cost, and really it's, it's a, it's taking this building, improving the outside, some landscaping, doing a water feature, facade improvements or renovation. And the purpose here was, as the application shows, this was valued, it's actually 2015, the value is about $424,000, and that was at 83% occupancy. For 2016, so this year, that valuation's dropping down to $290,000 roughly, $292,000 I think it was. So, so there's a pretty drastic decrease in value right now, and it's 100% vacant at the time, so the assessor came in, did their income approach, and so there's a pretty drastic decrease in value. So the idea here is make some improvements, get Tyson new tenants in, put that value back up. So the projection, so, so just that, just that decrease itself, the projection, if it gets 100% occupied for next year, 2017, right about $560,000 of value, which gets it just, you know, back to where it was, plus potentially a little more with the, with the improvements. So, so it's, it presents itself as a good project in the sense that it's very much, you know, in the blight and substandard conditions, we're seeing an immediate, immediate decrease in value, so hopefully this is something that will help enhance the property and change that downward movement. So this would be, it's a very quick turnaround time, construction, really it's starting quick and getting done in a couple of months cause the, the building's there, it's just some, there's some interior improvements too, but we're obviously looking at the exterior improvements. So the, the, the application included a lot of the estimated costs and some bids. Really, it's exterior facades, it was about $54,000, some new storefront glass doors, about $22,500. Landscaping, and that was mainly that water feature, $15,000. They included the electric, but that was most, that's mostly the interior work. So what we did is we looked at just the lighting that was tied to the landscaping, because landscaping is one of the eligible costs, so we put $1,000 of that in there. There was additional costs, obviously, of the architecture engineering, but that, that was about $95,000 we identified as potential eligible costs in this project. And again, I guess I'd say, as a reminder, when we look at facade, we're really looking at, if you're building a building, obviously you have to put sides up, so you're not gonna get all of those costs are eligible. But in this case, it's a pure renovation, the building exists, and we always look at facade as anything that they've done over and above code to enhance the area. And so, as we looked at this, it was, the idea was, the building exists and the building could exist as it is, however it's declining in value. So really, this entire cost is really above and beyond code. So that's, that's how we looked at this as the facade piece of this. So yeah, they included all their costs and the, in their application, and really, the goal is to get three new tenants in that building and bring in some new tenants. I'm gonna just keep going on the cost benefit analysis, if you have any questions, stop me anytime. As always, these things just kind of run, run in together. So we, in the cost benefit analysis, we took that information. Base value for 2016 will be $293,658, that's what the assessor's gonna come in at. Projecting that out based on the same income approach that they used, will bring it up to $560,000, assuming we get these improvements and it becomes 100% occupied. That'll be an increment next year of $266,000 of value increment, so about $4,600 in tax increment. Based on that, when we look at that, that's gonna, that's gonna provide about $47,000 in, in TIF indebtedness over the 15-year period. So that's, so as I said before, we've got about $95,000 identified in eligible uses and about 47 in sourced, you know, the TIF, the actual TIF that's gonna come in. But as we look at this project, I mean, it's really, those numbers, those numbers kind of indicate the blight and substandard conditions and what this is specifically addressing. Enhancing the aesthetics of the redevelopment area, revitalizing this property and reversing that decrease in valuation. Potentially, and ideally, we're encouraging new commercial tenants, additional businesses to locate in the redevelopment area, and obviously that just builds on itself, and we expect that to decrease blight and substandard conditions more. This was, as it was said in the applications, really the idea is, in order to entice these new tenants, there really needs to be some improvements done to the building. So the idea is without, without TIF, the enhancements, the facade work, and so that this landscaping features can't be done, and without that, the, there are new tenants that are willing to move in, and therefore, again, it's just a, it's a decrease that it can't be corrected without TIF, and that's kind of how it was brought in. Not really expected any negative impacts on employers in the area, employees. I mean, this is hopefully bringing in three new businesses, I believe, I'm gonna speak to that, but my understanding is we don't have anything lined up right now, but there's a couple of potential new, new businesses to the towns, what we were told at the CRA meeting, and without anything committed yet, but this is some potential for some new, some new, two new businesses at least, and then the third bay as well, which may either be relocation or new tenants. And again, as I mentioned, when we looked at this, really, all this facade and landscaping, this is required improvements, it's all exceeding what's required, because the building exists and can function. So we looked at that really as all, you know, anything above that code compliance as potential eligible costs. Exhibit B on the cost benefit analysis goes through the, goes through the calculation you just talked about. To get that, the $266,000 incremental value creates about $4,600 in incremental taxes. Over the 15 years, that's about, we used, we estimated a 5.5% interest rate. Obviously, that'll change, that may change depending on lender and everything, but using that 5.5% interest rate. It's a loan of about $47,000, less the CRA fees, about $45,000 to, $45,500 to spend. And as I indicated, we identified $92,000 in eligible costs, so. Sources, I mean, the sources are there, they don't cover the uses, but obviously, that's a pretty nice, that's a nice piece of it to help out with that cost, and that's, and that's the purpose of this project. So, when we looked at that in CRA, it says that CRA met May 4th, approved the redevelopment plan amendment, cost benefit analysis. Planning commission met last week on the 9th, and recommended approval of the plan amendment as well, so. The plan amendment itself, going on to the next piece, again, this is just, this is just the amendment to the redevelopment plan to identify the project, a lot of this is repetitive because we just talked about it, so. But basically, that same project, we just identified that project, it'll be in the plan, identify some of those concepts we just talked about, and then the only thing, so exhibit B in the plan amendments are statutory elements, which we look at every time, because those are things that are actually listed out in statute. In this case, it's, it's a pretty straightforward and simple analysis, because there's no public acquisition, it's already owned by the applicant, the redeveloper. The building exists, it's a commercial building, there's no population density issues to really cause concern. Obviously, since the building exists, there's no land coverage issues. No, we don't see any traffic flow, street layout, street grade issues. Obviously, the intent is to bring in some more business, but this is, that's what the property's designed for, so it shouldn't be any issues there. Parking will meet or exceed the requirements, and it's a permitted use in the zoning district. It's a CBD, commercial business district, but same use as it is right now, so it's a permitted use there, so. Really, pretty clean plan amendment, but again, just, it is, we need to get that identified in the, specifically in the redevelopment plan to use TIF. So all, with all that said, then the next piece is the redevelopment agreement. Again, this looks very similar to most agreements that came before council, but just point out a few highlights. Effective date, as I mentioned, this will be a quick turnaround time for construction, so the effective date will be January 1st, 2017. So creating the tax increment next year will be the goal, and get that value back up starting next year. The minimum valuation, $560,000. We always, I always have a little bit of a concern with the renovation that doesn't, doesn't bring in a new building as far as just meeting that valuation. We talked about this with the redevelopers at the CRA meeting, and just the idea of what happens. First of all, there's a certain confidence, because the assessor came in, said, here's the income approach model I'm using, this is why it's dropped down, so if it's 100% full and with these improvements, we, there's a pretty reasonable expectation it could meet this 560. But also, we talked about the, what happens if they don't? If they get a loan, and that, and it requires $560,000 in order to service that TIF loan, and it's short, all the city's doing, all the CRA's doing is passing through the TIF, that's the tax increment that they receive, and the redevelopers is on the hook for any shortfall there, and that was clear, so again, while, while there's some, I usually have little hesitations in creating that value if there's not, if there's just some refinishing and remodeling, but in this case, it seems like that's probably a, this is probably a good, very likely what's gonna happen, so. Because we're doing facade work, this redevelopment agreement includes the facade easement, against the various, the standard form we've used before, just putting that easement in place for the 15-year TIF period, making sure we clearly show this as, that this wasn't public improvement and the TIF was used. So that's included in sort of the same standard form we've used in previous projects. we're gonna lob this. The TIF sources and uses here is the exact same we just talked about in the cost benefit analysis, it's coming straight from that. So that's really the project in a nutshell. I'm glad to answer any questions about the TIF piece, and I know if you have questions about the business, Kerry's here, you can probably talk about that more than I can.
Any questions for Andrew at this time? If you'd like to go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this item? Kerry, did you want to say anything?
Hope it makes it feel any better, I got, we do have a lease on.
Could you come watch the voting, so we could hear you better? Thank you.
I'm Kerry Hendricks, and as far as the project goes on the Bradford Center, we currently do have a lease agreement for about 40% of the space. And I, we're pretty close to having probably another 40% lease. I think, well, we should only have about 1,200 square foot available, probably within the next month. We're still working the details out. I did agree, but I haven't got the contract back on. So basically, that place is 7,200 square feet. I got a contract on 3,000 right now, and I believe I have another 3,000 under contract, I just don't have the documents. And we do have somebody looking at the 1,200 that's remaining. Part of this project, I need to put a roof on that place, and sort of some gutters and some issues, that's had some water issues in the past, so with getting these new tenants signed, I need to do some work to the place. So the TIF would help me, because I need to do it anyway, so, you know, that's kind of where. And then part of the value that I look at as an investor is the cap rate versus what the profit is on the property. And I have about a $7 profit per square foot, it works out to be about 560 also, so. If I was looking to buy that property rented, so, with 100% occupancy, it would be that. And it's a cap rate, so as we redevelop other properties in town, the cap rate gets better, because our cap rate really should be like seven, and our cap rate's high, because we have, you can see, it's pretty high. Sorry, I get nervous, but, so our cap rate here is like nine, right, 0.9%? Typically, it's about seven, Jonathan would be a little better at that, but so with the seven, that building with that number of square footage would jump up to about a $900,000 value. So there's really a lot of room there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kerry?
Thank you.
All right.
We'll go ahead and ask if anyone else from the public that wishes to comment on this item? Go ahead and close the public comment portion of this public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the council? Or was I asked someone to introduce the resolution under E, which is a consideration of a, of a resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment?
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-sixteen dash twelve. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Again, I would ask for someone to introduce the resolution for item F, which is consideration of a resolution approving the redevelopment agreement and the issuance of TIF indebtedness for the redevelopment project. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-sixteen dash thirteen. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Thank you. Move on to item number five. This is a preview of city's updated website. I asked Megan a while ago to take a look at, at the website. We haven't really done a lot of maintenance on the website over the years. It, it's looked pretty much the same as it had probably since it was first designed, when a lot of, when a lot of entities started their websites. And so what we, what I asked her to do was take a look at what other communities have done for their websites and, and try and come up with a design that would be more, more modern and current as well as easily accessible on mobile devices, for example, and just trying to keep up with technology as it moves forward. And so what we have here is a design that's fairly common. If you'd like to see one similar, I think Reno has one that's somewhat similar to this. We have a large picture. And then if you, if, Megan, if you wanna, I guess like I said, across the top, so you have your main, what you gonna call them, categories, and then you have a number of links that takes you to different places. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at it before the meeting, but there's a, a lot of content that was moved over from the old site as well as updated. For example, one of the things we tried to do was have a mapping program where a lot of these items will show up on a map. Part of the challenge was working with Google on that because I think our burn pile was about five miles north of town, according to Google, and I believe one of our parks was in Oregon. So I don't know if that's been resolved yet, but we, I know Megan was.
One of them has been resolved.
Okay, so we won't talk about that. We're still working, working on that. And so this is, so this shows you sort of the mapping, and the idea is to have this more user-friendly, allow the information that is gonna be considered static. There's a history page where we talked about the history of Seward. Obviously, that's not gonna change much, but the events, the calendar, those types of things are going to change, and those are the things that we wanna keep fresh. One of the things that was added is a ticker on the top. For people who've done analytics on websites, one of the challenges is, is repeat clicks, is getting people to come back to your website. And one of the issues you have sometimes is if you don't have updated information on your, on your main page, people typically will come back maybe once or twice, and then they just stop coming back because they, they're not seeing anything that's obviously new. So that, that ticker can be fairly easily updated on, on the daily, a weekly if not daily basis, depending on, on what's going on.
And it doesn't always have to be jobs.
Yeah.
Like the now hiring can be changed to, you know, rec programs and.
So like if a deadline is coming up for a sign up on the rec program, that can be put up there as a reminder for people. So I'm like, yeah, so I leave about Seward. Some of these will take you to external sites such as Concordia or The Chamber. Some of these will, will, I guess, all of these are gonna be external sites on that. And this is the history portion of it, where we incorporated some old photos as well as information. I have a, a friend of mine in Lincoln actually was doing a, a survey of all the communities and their, their, the history and specifically historic, historic markers, and she got, she was not happy with me that we did not have like a history of Seward page on her website. So that was something that we wanted to make sure, just to incorporate that. And of course, like on this one, see the Fourth of July has a hyperlink there? So as people are going through this, it can take them to those events and those festivals and activities as well. The recognition, there's been a number of, in particular, online rankings that have come out in recent years, and so those will obviously be updated as well as new ones come out, and they, and they tend to get stale over time. But really, the big thing is, is we wanted to show you this to see if you had any concerns about the overall layout, the way it looks, the, I believe, and you can scroll down, right? Yeah, and so then as you scroll down, you have additional information like the calendar, for example, social media as well. But the idea is that this will, will be continually adding more content to this as well as updating current content. So if you have ideas of things that might be helpful or useful, let us know. One of the challenges was trying to figure out where to park all the information, because there are some places where you might see the same, there, there are some, some items that are sort of cross-referenced because they make sense in one category, but they also make sense in another category, so they show up in a couple of different places. You can go to.
Like agendas and minutes are here under the how do I, but then it's also under government because people would think to.
Again, you go to the, the city council, so we show them what the picture. So the idea was to put the photos with basic information about each of the council members on here, and that's why we have the, the pictures. And I was gonna say, could you go to the, like go to the golf course? So as an example, the, they had their own website, but what we've done is we've incorporated it into this format as well with contact information for people at the golf course, for the employees, well, the hours and maps, and trying to keep everything in one place with all the information there.
Like the library.
And there are a couple of different, library, for example, I believe if you click on this, it actually does, it's the only one that has an external site, and that's because a lot of libraries around the country have, they have a page on the city website, but then they'll have like their own separate website as well. And so that's why that, you have a separate link to take you to that. The other, police department has had theirs in the, a separate one in the packs, and so has the civic center has had a separate page, and so what we wanna do is bring those into the fold so they have the same design layout, so they look like they're part of the same website concept, but they'll still be managing them separately on their own, because they'll have updates and, and for, it makes sense to have them be able to do that on, on their own and not have to go through, I think Megan would prefer not having everybody go through, Megan, when it comes to updating the information. So, so take a look at this if you haven't yet and see what you think. The hope would be is to have it go live and replace the existing one, you know, at least by the Fourth of July, if not sooner.
Our, right now, we have a, a main website and a separate mobile website, and I believe that mobile website expires like the end of June, so if we could get this new launched, new one launched, because it'll take the place and do both websites, and that would be great. We don't have to renew for another year on that separate mobile site.
And because we were able to have Megan do this herself, and we've been able to save quite a bit of money not having to outsource this or, or contract this out. Typically, a website can be in the thousands of dollars, if not more than ten thousand dollars, depending on how extensive that rebuild is. So I wanted to say special thanks to Megan for putting in the time and making this, making this work. Are there any questions, I guess, about this design or any concerns, or is there anything or you would, you know, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, take a look at it, you can just let us know if you come across things. There'll probably be some typos, and, and, you know, some, you might find a burn pile in Utica, but we're working on those things, so just let us know if you come across them, and then we'll try to get those things fixed. Yes.
Just a thought, and just something I thought about, I don't know what anybody else thinks about it, but would there be use to have a sort of like a what's going on in the wards page? In other words, like we're gonna have a meeting on Star Street tomorrow night, and it's really difficult to get everybody to notify them. But if we had a page where we could list that, you know, here's what's going on in Ward one or Ward four, or just one page for all of them and divide it up, or, I don't know if there's enough stuff to do that, but it does come in handy once in a while when we're trying to get people together and get some information out. Or to, or to attract people's attention to an issue, saying, do you have any concerns about this? Give me an email or whatever, I don't know, whatever, what else thinks.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Even a place where the, I, I don't know where things go now, if they all go to Bruce and go to you guys, or, you know, if they're able to leave things on, on the webpage there if they have concerns on things.
Megan, do we have something? I know we talked about something.
Yeah, at one time, we had a.
Oh, it was.
A report of concern button right on the main page, but then we were like, well, is that too negative?
Click here for every problem in town.
So to contact the city, which is found in that how do I menu, but it's also right down here in the middle. There are just like several ways of contacting, and there is a little questions and concerns area there, but we could make it more prominent of the, you know.
We'll make it part of, being part of that, like one page for the council and the mayor to, because we need to put stuff out there, and get the word out and something.
Yeah, I would say even if you link it off of the, the council page, we got all our photos, have something there, because usually they're looking for us to voice a concern, find out how to contact us.
I think if they click on the name.
Yeah, send the, it opens up your email and puts in the person's email address.
Yeah, they can contact us, but we don't really have any way to shoot them an email.
We're working on that.
Yeah, we are working on some general communication methods with the public. So hopefully, at some point in the near future, we can roll something out that will allow people to sign up for certain types of alerts. I think the school district has something similar for, for, for things. It'd be nice that if a practice is canceled as weather, to be able to notify everybody with one, with one click and, and be able to inform people as quickly as possible. And we are looking at tying in other social media, whether it's Twitter or Facebook or something else that the kids are using this, I don't know about, but whatever those things are trying to, because it's so hard to, it used to just be a newspaper was how you reached everybody that wanted to find out what's going on, and now it's so much more than that. It's presented some challenges, but I think we're headed in the right direction with this. So like I said, take a look and see if anything that, that strikes you as good or, or can't be improved on, and we can sure incorporate that. But I think it's come a long way, it's just the general layout, I think is much more modern and more, more contemporary than what you would typically expect on professional sites. So that's what we're going for, I think Megan did a great job. Thank you, Megan. Okay, that's item number five. Item number six, request for street closures, parade permit for July fourth festivities from the July fourth committee. This is a consideration of a resolution of closing up East Lane of Highway fifteen from Main to Seward Street, the North Lane of Highway thirty-four from Fifth to Sixth Street, and the Highway fifteen thirty-four intersection during the parade for the, the Fourth of July festivities. Is that right? Is that last one right? Fifteen thirty-four intersection?
He said they were gonna be different this year.
Is it? Okay, all right. And so typically with street closures, we can handle it administratively, but because it involves the state highway, we have to run through the council for your consideration. I don't know if you have any questions about this at all? If not, then I would ask for, someone introduce the resolution? The resolution has been introduced and designated as resolution number twenty-sixteen dash fourteen. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Somebody.
Your motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Okay, item number seven, consideration of a power purchase agreement with Blue Stem Energy versus Jilin.
Yeah. Well, Blue Stem's back, and we have Matt Robinette here from Blue Stem, but we've been working on the power purchase agreement, we talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, but Kelly had just a couple of more final legalese stuff on the contract that we got worked out. And so this is the final power purchase agreement that we have prepared for your consideration at this time, as we talked about, and Matt can talk, but they're proposing a one-point-seven megawatt wind turbine out on the east of, east of Seward. The, the agreement would be is that they would pay all the costs, and then we'd buy all the energy out of it at a rate that is negoti, that we've negotiated or that they've told us. So anyway, if you have questions for Matt about it, I worked with the NPPD on the contract just to make sure the language is all good with our contract with them, and then Kelly worked with, with Matt and Adam on the final wording on a couple of issues that he had with them, and we feel like this is, it's, it's a good agreement, and now it's kind of up to the council as to whether or not you wanna have green energy in your portfolio. Like we've talked about before, NPP, or NPPD allows us to buy up to two megawatts of green energy to replace, and it replaces what we buy from them, so we're not buying extra energy or anything like that, it just replaces it. And at the pricing we have right now, basically, it's a wash. What we're paying for our power from N, or NPPD and what we'll pay from them is basically the same. We know exactly what we're gonna pay with Blue Stem, because for the first three years, it doesn't change, and then after that, it ratchets two and a half percent a year until year twenty-five, it's a twenty-five-year contract. So we know exactly what we'll pay. And again, the total power out of this is less than two percent of our energy, so even if the price is a little bit higher or a little bit lower, we're really not gonna notice it in our bills. Matt, did you wanna say anything, I guess?
No, other than.
Sorry, Mayor.
Good evening, council and, and mayor. Matt Robinette, project manager with Blue Stem Energy Solutions. Adam apologizes he couldn't make it here tonight, I know you're more familiar with him, he had a previous commitment, and so I'm stepping in for him. Usually, I can't get a word in edgewise when he's around, so it's nice to finally be able to talk, but, no, we're just here really to, to answer any questions that you guys may have in regards to the project and/or the pricing, and hopefully get a approval to move forward with the power purchase agreement. If you guys would approve tonight or decide tonight that you wanted to move forward with the agreement, we would then submit the K four fifty application to NPPD, which would allow them to do their interconnection analysis, that would identify any upgrades we needed to make to Seward's system and just make sure that we're interconnecting into your distribution system responsibly. Along with that, we would also move deeper into our formal approvals through the environmental agencies and work through some other permitting processes, like the Public Service Commission as an example. We would also work through the local zoning process or begin that process where we're working with the county planning commission, and then with their recommendation, we'd go in front of the county board for their approval. So all that being said, a vote tonight by you to move forward with the power purchase agreement would be a, a, a big milestone for the development and kick us into the next phase of the development, but there's still a lot of development tasks ahead of us, and realistically, you're probably looking at five to six more months of work before we'd be able to think about starting constructions, so it can give you a little bit of time for them. So with that, again, I'd just be open to answering any questions.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Sid?
First for Bruce, and then what was your name again?
Matt.
Matt. What percentage, Bruce, did you say NPPD allows us to buy renewable energy from other sources?
What percentage, Bruce, did you say NPPD allows us to buy renewable energy from other sources?
They allow two megawatts for us.
And this would be one point seven?
Yes. So we'd still have a little bit of room left if we wanted to do something else.
Right, right.
And as our load grows, then that amount will grow with it.
Correct, right. Do we have any other, like, solar proposals? Like, do we have anything else to compare what we might be able to throw into the renewable mix?
Solar would be the only thing. There, there, there's still, solar's kind of a big thing right now in Nebraska. Uh, a lot of it is because of what's going on in Central City. They've started a solar garden on private property to where basically, uh, companies can go out and, and buy a panel, put it on this property, and then it all goes into the city and then they get a break. It's kind of how it works. And so they're pushing that really hard, but it's, the problem with solar, the big thing is, is it just takes up a lot of space to not get a lot of energy out of it. Um, I think they've been working on this for several years and they're up to three hundred KW maybe. I think they want to get to five hundred. So it'd be, it's a pretty big farm to get to three hundred, which is what we'll have left over. So I could see us maybe doing a solar project in the future or something like that, that...
Or building specific, like
Sure. Right?
Now, building specific, that's different. If it's an individual doing it, that's different, that's totally out of us, so...
Right, right.
That's why we already, we have two solar projects in town right now. Commercial ones, but they're small, you know? You're talking about maybe twenty KW on one and four or five on another one, so they're very small. So if individuals want to do it, that, that's outside of this, uh, our, our project or our parameters that we have to deal with. It would have to be a city project to where we could build a, a solar farm. And that would, then we'd probably have to pay for that and things like that, so we'd have the expense involved. The thing about the wind is it's one, it's, it's one turbine, one point seven megawatts, and that's kind of where the value comes from is, is all that cost is right there up front. And as it generates, it's, it just, it'll run, and run and run, that's the idea, so...
Megan, tell you, Blue Stem as a developer, we're really agnostic to, to technology. It's more about the local distributed generation, uh, model, um, is, is what we focus on. And so we're constantly looking at renewable technologies, whether it's wind or solar, right? And, uh, the true value to you as a customer today, um, or the city of Seward Utilities, uh, the values in wind and, and not solar, uh, on large scale utility projects. Um, so we're looking at, we're pricing solar projects, um, probably every six to eight weeks, so we're pretty in tune with where that market's at. And just because of the cost of installation and, and capacity factors on, on, uh, the solar arrays, your, your pricing is just not remotely close on these utility scale projects to where, where we can get the money priced. Now, solar does make sense on, on the rooftop arrays, um, or, you know, for your net metering customers, or if, uh, you were interested in putting in like a community solar garden, uh, where you're really just focusing on maybe the environmental attributes of the project and, and customers are willing to pay a premium for that energy to save their green. But to actually, as a utility, to make fiscal sense, uh, solar is just not there today.
Matt, right?
Yeah. So my question, well, a couple of questions for you. I did send an email to one of your main guys.
Adam.
Adam.
Adam, yeah. And he had sent me some links to some other projects that you guys have done, like for Loop and NPPD, and maybe one other one. This twenty-four year contract, how does this compare to the other ones that you have in place? Like, for instance, with Loop and NPPD, did you just develop it and build it and they own it? Or do you own it and sell it to them? And then what, what is the term of the contracts with them? They're all the same model, where we would, Blue Stem is the developer, the owner and the operator of the project. So they would have this, virtually this same PPA, uh, agreement in place for their project. So they, they both signed up for the twenty-four year? Yeah. Okay. Uh, yeah. All of those would be twenty-five year commitments. We do have some out there, um, uh, that would be shorter and it's just a matter of economics. So the shorter the term, the higher the starting price, right? Uh, but the longer we can commit to that, to that PPA term, the lower we can get that starting price up. Okay, then just another question. I noticed that you, Blue Stem incorporated in two thousand twelve? Yeah. With the Secretary of State. Obviously, you know, wind is not an old technology. It's fairly new, but I didn't, I didn't comb through all those pages of the agreement. But I've got a little experience in the, in the wind industry and I, I know there's some companies that, um, after twenty years, sometimes after thirty years, um, they walk away from the turbine. And whoever's land it was built on is their problem. Sure. I didn't read in yours, and, I mean, every company has to start sometime. You guys started just a few years ago. Obviously, you're committed for twenty-five years, even though you're only a three-year-old company or so, to have something in place to maintain that piece of equipment. And then I guess the other, my other part of the question is, what kind of agreement would you have with the landowner at the end of like that twenty-five years or thirty years, wherever you expect the life of that, the cell to be? Sure. First, I'll touch on Blue Stem being incorporated in, in two thousand twelve. We actually are derived from a ninety-five-year-old construction company. And back in two thousand eight, when there was the economic downturn, uh, Boyd Jones, the construction company, actually started looking at, um, other avenues of revenue moving forward, right? And maybe where there were opportunities in, you know, the next twenty, twenty-five, fifty years, okay? And so really, they got into the business of wanting to erect winter. And, um, through that process, then, uh, they won an RFP with Nebraska Public Power District, which was our first project up in Springview, Nebraska. NPPD called with good news and bad news. You won the RFP, we lost our financing. And so if you're willing to own and operate the project for the life of the project, um, we would sign a long-term PPA with you. And so that's really how Blue Stem came about, okay? And so that's, that's really when we started, was back in two thousand eight. But we, we come to the wind, uh, industry or the renewable industry with ninety-five years of business practice and, and ethics behind us. Both companies have the same ownership and, and, and so, um, there's still plenty of financial backing, you know, behind Blue Stem, even though it's a relatively new company. As far as, uh, twenty-five years being a long time, absolutely it is. We use all, uh, American-made grade A machines, right? Good technology. So these, these machines are G turbines, um, which is a reputable manufacturer. And we also team up with them and partner with them on the operations and maintenance for, for the life of the contract. So no different than any, any other piece of equipment, whether it's a vehicle or a, or a combine or whatever it is, you know, we're doing routine, uh, semi-annual maintenance on these machines. And then, like, you know, we partner with them too on unplanned events as well, okay? So it's good technology, uh, good manufacturer behind it, and we've got the O and M agreements in place with them. And as far as the, the decommissioning, then, after twenty-five years, we have decommissioning clauses in our land leases with the landowner that hold us to, um, uh, the standards that we have to decommission the turbine and the project at, at the end of the project. Seward County also has decommissioning, um, regulations in their zoning. So not only do we, are we held to it by the lands lease, but we're also held to those, uh, decommissioning standards, um, within Seward County's zoning. Thank you. You bet.
Any other questions? No other questions? Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I'll move, it'll be approved.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Saying no? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
I'll leave a staff there to talk about this one, because he understands this next one.
Okay, item number eight, consideration of application for Nebraska Public Power District approval to connect distributed or local generation? Would you want to take that too?
Yeah, so basically this would just be the next step in the development process. And, and so this K four fifty application is just the interconnection study or the interconnection application that we submit to NPPD. Uh, they do an analysis on your subtransmission system and our proposed interconnection point. Uh, and it just identifies any upgrades that we would have to pay for to your system to interject at that point and just make sure that we're responsibly interconnecting to, to your system. Typically, it could take sixty to ninety days, you know, for them to do their analysis and then to get your approval back from them.
Uh, just a ballpark idea, when would, when would a, where would the turbine be up?
So my guess would be four to six months. We still have development activities to take place. So for instance, some of them are long lead ends, like this, this K four fifty application can take, um, you know, three months. And then working through the local zoning process. Uh, once, once we get through that, say if you're four or five months out, uh, once you start construction, um, a single turbine project is, is, is probably a four-month, um, construction project. And so hopefully, um, we could have a turbine up and operating close to the first of year, somewhere in that timeframe.
Any other questions on item eight?
Kind of clarification if I could?
Sure.
The prior one just taken locked us into a rate.
Yes.
But we didn't go into closed session to even know what the final rate was.
I mean, it was, it was, if you guys wanted to, we, you know, I said what the, I said that we had pricing set and nobody talked about pricing at all, so I guess it's, can we go back?
But I don't know if anyone wants to do that, I just wanted to bring that up.
You said it was gonna be a wash with what in bringing the rate.
Right, I mean, I got the pricing right here. It's got the twenty-five year prices, but it's a confidential kind of thing for now. And if you want to go back, I think we could back up and reopen that discussion.
Yeah, Mrs. Lee.
Yeah, you, you can, at, at this point, you can, um, step back on the agenda, reconsider going to closed session.
Would the council be comf-, more comfortable doing that? It's gonna, it's entirely up to you all.
It, and, and it is the, we did present the pricing too. I don't, I don't know if it was a month or six weeks ago.
Is it the same?
Uh, so it's actually a little bit better.
It's better.
So, uh, it's the pricing that you would have seen, um, a month ago roughly. The only thing that changed is that we actually, uh, held the price steady for the first three years rather than the first two years. And so that escalated and delayed take place until, uh, before.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's okay. So then on item eight, this is the consideration of application for Nebraska Public Power District approval to connect distributed or local generation. Is there a, a, a motion?
Someone?
The motion, is there a second? The motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Unless you want to talk about a pet rescue?
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, I will, here in a second. So for item nine, um, Dr. Ellis was on the agenda this morning for the county to discuss this with them. And then part of his presentation is going to be updating the council on that conversation as well as what the next steps would be. Unfortunately, he was in surgery and was not, not himself personally. The veterinarian was doing surgery and was not able to make it to the meeting. And so, uh, he asked us to table it for this evening, but since it's on the agenda, I just wanted to ask if anyone from the public wanted to talk on that issue before we move on. Seeing no one wanting to talk about the issue on number nine, we'll go ahead and, and move on to number ten. And this is consideration of resolution as a disabled person's parking space in the off-street parking area at the corner of Seventh Street and Jackson Avenue.
I will just say that we've got a, we had a citizen that asked about why we didn't have a handicapped space out in front of municipal building where there's all these meetings. And so that's what got me asking John, where can we put a handicapped space out here? And then John will tell you where that's at. It was from a request.
Go ahead, John.
All right. Basically, it's the first stall at the corner of Jackson and... This is our building right here. We'll end up losing one parking stall because we have to make a, um, disabled accessway for vans. So this red area will be the accessway. The blue area will be the new parking space. And then this white line will disappear and we'll just have a little bit more room. This site was chosen because we have ADA access to the building from right here. Uh, we looked at, down here, problem was is the ramp going into that driveway wasn't, uh, the one and twelve slope, which brings ADA requirement, so... That would be the location.
Any questions, uh, for John? If there are no questions, I would entertain, or ask someone to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce it.
Resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty sixteen dash fifteen. Would you like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Someone? Second.
Your motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. So before we go to the next one, um, we need to move back real quick to our resolution, uh, on number six. And this was for the parade. I, when I read this out loud, it struck me as not correct. And if you look at the, um, second line, at, at the end, at the comma, it says, "and the Highway fifteen thirty-four intersection during the parade." And that should be Highway fifteen and Seward Street for the parade. And that's what kind of threw me. And so what I would ask is for someone to introduce the resol-, reintroduce the resolution amending that. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
What you could do is just move reconsider, um, discuss and then move to amended, as you mentioned.
Okay. So is there any discussion on that, or is that understood, that where we're at? Okay, if so, then I guess I would ask for someone to introduce the resolution, um, twenty sixteen dash fourteen amended to, uh, the corner of Highway fifteen and Seward Street.
I would make a, recommend making a motion to, to reconsider your previous vote on the, on the, on the resolution.
Okay.
I'll move to reconsider the vote.
Second.
Your motion and a second? Is there any discussion on the reconsideration? Saying no, please register your votes. Please display the votes. No. Now should, now someone should, or could introduce the resolution?
Introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the amended resolution. Okay. We, uh, the resolution has been introduced as amended and it designated as resolution number twenty sixteen dash fourteen as amended. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
It's not moved.
Sorry.
Your motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Now we'll get back on track. Number eleven, city ministerial report.
Um, the report's in your pack of what's been going on, administration and with all the departments. If you have any questions on that, but I, I did want to say that, um, with all the rain we had and everything like that, the, the crews worked really hard on getting that ball field ready for the Salt Dogs game and it looked wonderful and, and it sounded like it went great and everything like that, so... Believe me, Wednesday afternoon, we weren't sure if we were gonna get it done. And if it would have rained Wednesday night, there'd no way we'd have had it. But we had, uh, four guys up there on Wednesday and we had seven, I think, up there on Thursday, just making sure it looked nice and, and it, uh, it looked great, so they worked really hard on that.
Yes, Tom?
Just, uh, on behalf of Jonathan, I was asked to express from the Economic Development Committee, um, our appreciation for the city's efforts on the Salt Dog event. It was a huge success and the city did a fantastic job. And we wanted to commend, uh, the city staff and everybody for, uh, doing a wonderful program.
I'll pass that along to him.
Anything else to add? Or any, any questions for Bruce? Otherwise, I entertain a, a motion to accept the city ministerial report.
Second.
The motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number twelve, a presentation to resigned council member Barb Pike for her years of service on the Seward City Council. And I know you threatened us not to give you anything, but we're gonna give you something. This is an appreciation of your dedicated service as a member of the city council from June nineteen ninety-nine to December two thousand four and from December twenty-ten to May twenty-sixteen. The city of Seward thanks you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say that it's been an honor to serve people of Seward. And I've always been impressed by the staff and the employees of the city. And I believe that we have a wonderful crew.
Thank you.
That includes the nigger.
All right. Special thank you then. Then item 13 is confirmation of Mayor Ike Murray's appointment of Carl Miller as councilmember of Ward 4 to replace resigned councilmember Barbara Pike. We need a motion to approve unless there's any discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Carl, have you come forward to the podium?
I, Carl Miller, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion, that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of councilmember of Ward 4 of the city of Seward, Nebraska, according to law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or by violence. And that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So I will do that.
You sit, I will, right? So congratulations.
It was quiet.
It was quiet. And then the next item is the confirmation of mayor's appointments. And these are for Carl to replace Barb on her various committee assignments. So I will do these by letter. Section 14A is appointment of Carl Miller to serve on the Personnel Finance Audit Committee.
Move approval.
Technically, I don't think you can make the motion.
She's no longer on campus.
Yeah, sorry.
Get your plaque.
I got the look from the attorney. I could feel it. So your motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item B is appointment of Carl Miller to serve on the Seward Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item C, appointment of Carl Miller to serve on the LBA 47th Act Application Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Appointment of Carl Miller to serve on the Rail Campus Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. And then for item 15, we do have a couple announcements. One is the, on June 3rd, we're doing the mayor's global classic. It's supposed to be funny. And that's at the Seward Community Golf Course. And this would be at dusk, which would be roughly nine o'clock. Be a four-person scramble. I believe it's $35 a person. So if you have three other people you'd like to golf with, drag them down and get their money and sign up for that. Also, I wanted to make note, we have a former officer killed there who had passed away from cancer. And his visitation is Wednesday, tomorrow, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And the rosary is from 6:30, is at 6:30 p.m. tomorrow, and that's at the Boltzky Funeral Home Chapel. And then the funeral is at 10:30 on Thursday at St. Vincent de Paul, if you are interested and available to attend. So those are the only announcements we have. Item 16 is a future request for council agenda items or administrative action. Seeing none. And item 17 is a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.